All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our regular board meeting for April 29th. First of all, I just want to say that it's really a relief and really nice to have a full board with our new members. And we want to welcome Kuli, who just won an election, which is a huge thing. So Andrew also won reelection. And we are joined by Mr. Rick Crossen, who has been appointed for this next year, and we welcome you. So we have a lot of work ahead of us this year, and it's really nice to see, you know, the team, the whole team here finally. So we're going to take the roll call. Kenzie? McCoy? Here. Gerlach? Here. Mills?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Becker?
Here.
Crossen?
Here.
Lyerly?
Here.
Okay, all seven members are accounted for. Would you all please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Would someone like to read our mission statement, please? Anybody? Go ahead, Brian.
We educate all students to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world.
Thank you. And next, I'll read the land acknowledgement statement. "We, the members of the Green Bay Area Public School District, recognize and honor the original inhabitants of Northeast Wisconsin. Our district lives, works, and learns upon the ancestral homelands of the Oneida and Hochunk Nations and the current homeland of Oneida Nation. We acknowledge the 12 diverse and vibrant Wisconsin First Nations who have persevered here since before recorded time and continue to be integral parts of our community. We uphold our responsibility to repair relationships, initiate partnerships, and stand with all First Nation communities." We have kind of an intricate agenda tonight with lots of housekeeping and lovely recognition and things. So, but we do have new members and we might need a little patience, I guess, as we as we work our way through this agenda. It has a lot of different steps. So
I have a point of order.
Please.
And I don't, I don't care if it's later, if it's allowed to be later, but I just wanted to make sure that we're not obligated because it is the first meeting in April on or after the Fourth Monday. Is it mandatory to elect officers first or before the first formal business is done? If it's not mandatory, I don't have a problem with where it is on the agenda, but I wanted to check.
Um.
Oh, that's what that was? The question was, do we, I don't, I'm okay with it being later on the agenda, but is there, since this is the organizational meeting after the, you know, with the Fourth or on or after the Fourth Monday, are we obligated to do officer elections first? Or if if we're not, then I'm fine with where it is. I just want to make sure we're not making an error.
There's nothing on the agenda prior to that election where there would need to be authority of the presiding officer, presiding president. It's simply the recognition and the the other few items. So I think it's okay where it is on the agenda because of the what's on previous to that.
So technically, it should probably be before the consent agenda, maybe, because that's business?
It could be, except that it's the consent agenda. So if there's a dispute over what the sitting president is doing with respect to the consent agenda, then you could move it up, but that's a board decision.
I'm fine with that. I think maybe if something is moved off the consent agenda, it should go after. But okay, just making, I just wanted to make sure we weren't making an error by not doing something at the very beginning. So thank you.
Okay, um. Let's see. We're going to move into our recognition. First on the agenda is the WEA donation presentation.
Nope.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Okay, I'm sorry, I was looking at the, at what's, how it's ordered on the actual agenda. So, okay, Christina.
Thank you so much. Is this on? Can you hear me? Everybody hear me? Okay? Okay, awesome. I get the honor and privilege of introducing Elvita Erdman tonight. Is it not on?
Yeah, I don't think it's on.
Testing, testing. Is it on now? Okay.
Yeah, speak a little bit louder.
Let me start again. I get the honor and privilege of introducing Elvita Erdman tonight. I told Elvita as we entered tonight that I was just going to talk. I've had the opportunity to work with Elvita for more years than I would care to admit, quite honestly. First, in her role, working at the Sexual Assault Center as an advocate, and most recently in her role as working for the Disability Rights in Wisconsin. But regardless of the organization that Elvita is representing, at the core of her work, has been a tireless and fearless advocate for individuals. And most often, it's individuals who are representative of underserved populations. Just recently, we held a family event for our Hispanic community, and we weren't sure if we were going to have enough participants to make that successful. And so I reached out to Elvita, and we were corresponding last minute, and it was Elvita who leveraged those existing strong relationships that she has cultivated with families over the years. And she made that event possible, and it was absolutely phenomenal. And I'm going to share a little bit with you about that a little bit later. But I am just so grateful to have this opportunity tonight to recognize Elvita. So if everybody could please join me in recognizing and supporting.
Okay, I think Lori wants to take a picture.
We'll have you come over here by the wall.
Good back, not a problem.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you so much. I appreciate everything you do. Thank you.
Okay. We have a second item. Go ahead, you're next.
Kenzie, can you put up the brief PowerPoint I created? As Kenzie's pulling that up, I'll go ahead and get started. But May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and as we're getting ready to embark upon May, this is just a really great opportunity that we have tonight to talk about this really critically important topic of mental well-being. And there definitely has been much discussion around the mental health needs of our students. And if you can advance to the next slide for me, Kenzie, I am just so proud of our district and the robust depth of initiatives that we have to successfully meet the needs of our students. This shows you the comprehensive system that recently was released from our Department of Public Instruction, and our systems of care certainly align with this framework. And for our purposes tonight, I am just going to take a little bit of time just to highlight a couple of these initiatives, a very broad overview of these. If you can advance the slide for me. So right there, I want to draw your attention to this picture, and you can see Elvita front and center there. And again, just to talk about this, it was an event that we call Table Talk. It was designed to reduce that barrier of stigma that is so profound, especially within our Hispanic community, and really talk about how can we encourage families to get access to mental health services. And what was so special about that event, you can see there, is that there's some district representation there, but also from our community members. And so it was really the community coming together to make that possible. Table Talk, if you're familiar with that, it's not a traditional type of parent presentation where it's an expert presenting information, but more so, it's based on the parent café model. So it's really parents learning and supporting each other, and it's based on rich conversation that gets elicited from specific prompts. I just, our families were so incredibly grateful to have this presentation in their native language, and we were so incredibly grateful to have our families there tonight. And to describe the energy and passion, it was just palatable that night. And we're just so excited that this is going to serve as a catalyst to more events such as this. And then at that other end of the continuum of services, certainly is the need for referral to our community providers for that level of care that we are unable to meet within our school system. And what we recognized is that it can be very daunting to navigate mental health care within our community. Therefore, the district entered a contracted service with Care Solace, and this occurred in January of 2023. This is really a mental health care coordination provider who provides the services in multiple languages, and they really meet families where they're at. So they glean that information that is necessary to make the successful linkage with a care provider. They ask about any transportation barriers, preferred language, they ask about insurance, and all of this has resulted in 40% of our families being successfully connected with a mental health provider. To provide some context around this, if you just provide a list of mental health providers, there's about an 18% success rate with that connection. So this is huge. When we also think about our data, the number one thing that our families are being referred for for services is anxiety. You can see there, it's 30%, closely followed by depression at 36%. Interestingly, when we think about our data by age group, it's pretty even split with 47% for that age group of three to 11-year-olds, 47%. So this just really, really emphasizes the importance of earlier interventions. We cannot wait until they get into middle and high school. We need to start early. And then 45% for adolescent population. And interestingly, for both of those populations, 19% of these students were being referred for suicidal ideation. So again, this data point just really emphasizes the need for this level of care. And if you could advance to the next slide for me, Kenzie? So although we are doing real things within our district, we never want to be complacent, and there's always more to be done. So on that note, I just want to say that we are so fortunate that we've had a funding partner from Madison that has stepped forward to help the district secure philanthropical support for our mental health programming. Their executive director is here to present us a special gift, and I am so pleased to introduce Steve Goldberg from the WA Member Benefits Foundation.
Thank you. I think that applause is really for Christina and the mental health team here at Green Bay Area Public Schools. I'm Executive Director of the WEA Member Benefits Foundation, and a couple years ago, we decided we wanted to find out what was the thing that kept public educators awake at night? And there were a lot of things that we learned, but one common theme, no matter where we went, no matter what part of Wisconsin we asked this question, a common theme was student mental health as a key issue keeping so many educators awake at night. And we asked them, what's missing from this picture? And one of the things they said was missing was support from private philanthropy. So then we went to our peers in the private philanthropy field and asked if they were interested in supporting school mental health in their own communities. They said, yes, but we don't know where to send the check. We don't know how much will be enough money. We don't know how to determine whether the money is being well-spent or whether the outcomes are worth supporting. And we said, well, what if somebody did that for you? What if somebody vetted the school district's approach to student mental health and helped you decide whether you and at what level you wanted to support that? And many of them said, we would send the check tomorrow morning. And that's what's starting to happen. There are 421 public school districts in the state of Wisconsin. So far, we're helping eight of them in this pilot phase of this effort to connect school district mental health programming with private funders in those communities. We've helped those eight school districts raise a million dollars of additional money that they wouldn't have had before or wouldn't have had otherwise. And they're using that money to serve 5,000 additional students whom they wouldn't have been able to serve without that participation by private philanthropy. And this is, as was already mentioned, Mental Health Awareness Month, May is the month where we try to recognize the issues surrounding mental health and some of the needs, as well as some of the resources in our communities. And one thing that I'm aware of during Mental Health Awareness Month is that the Green Bay School District has an extremely enlightened, holistic, and proactive and systemic approach to student mental health. I know because I've become conversant enough in this to be dangerous, but I've really seen what can happen when you have a dedicated, passionate team that knows what it's doing and that understands how to meet the most significant and severe needs of our student population. And the Green Bay School District is one such district. Besides, I love the drive up here from Madison. It's always a pleasant place to come, and I'm going to be up here a lot more because I'm going to be helping Christina, as well as Amy Fish, and the rest of your staff team, secure additional money from other private funders. And we've been talking to them already. Some of them have already given us some guidance. The Community Foundation, for example, and United Way have given us some guidance about how to approach funders in this community. And our friends at the Green Bay Education Association, specifically Brent Bergstrom, have stepped forward and made a donation already to help with this effort. And we're meeting with several other funders in the next few months. So what I'm about to provide you in the way of a check is a starter gift. And we're hoping that this check presentation can serve as an on-ramp to help the district tell its story to other potential private funders in the community. And I'm not suggesting that they become fundraising experts, because my experience is that when mental health professionals share their story, that becomes the fundraising gesture. They don't have to go in and try to raise the money. The story will raise the money. And you had a little taste of that story from Christina a few minutes ago. It's a compelling story. You're to be commended to qualify for this pilot program. There are only seven other districts in the state that are participating that have been qualified for it so far. But I know that Green Bay is going to make a difference. And I know that the money we provide you tonight will also make a difference. And I'm going to ask my colleague from the Member Benefits Company, Shelby Samuel, who's also like I am, based in Madison, but he loves making this trip as well. And we're going to unveil this check. It's an unrestricted gift of $20,000 for the Green Bay Area School District for you to use as you see fit, as long as it's within your student mental health framework, a framework that we know is solid and strategic, proactive, systemic, multi-tiered, wraparound, any word you want to use.
Got it.
Can you say funding, Cliff? Because that's what's happening to mental health money. Some of it way in July, including some of the money that one of your consortiums here in Green Bay received from mental health. Speaking of those consortiums, this school district is aligned with and plugged into and participating with those consortiums and collective efforts around youth mental health in the community. So they're not just off over here in left field doing their own thing. They're plugged into what the community is trying to do in an aligned way. And I spent the afternoon with folks at the Community Foundation here before I came over to this event, and they're all in in terms of trying to help the school district connect with other sources of private support. So with that, we would love to ask Christina to tell you how the money's going to be used. It's an unrestricted gift, but we do like to know how they're going to use it, and we're confident that it'll be used well. So tell them.
Yes, happy to tell them. So rather than layer on many other initiatives, our goal is to really expand, enhance, and sustain the work that we have, as well as add some additional time for our mental health navigator, who is really integral in coordinating our care and our services to support the mental health needs of our students.
Was I right? It's going to be well-spent? I think so. Let's applaud the way the money's going to be spent. So would you like, this check is very photogenic. Would you like a picture?
Before, before we do that, can I just take this moment to express our profound gratitude to this, to you for this contribution to services that we all know are desperately needed in our community? Thank you. I can't say enough. Thank you very much.
Welcome. Thank you for being supportive. The leadership of a district is important for many programs, but especially student mental health. And we want to acknowledge that as well.
Thank you.
So who wants to be in the picture? I would like to invite Brent Bergstrom from WBEA to be in the picture once he finishes chuckling. Because we appreciate his help in connecting us with the district. Thank you, everybody.
It's a hard act to follow, but we're going to do it with some further recognition. The Board of Education wishes to recognize our Golden Apple Award and Herb Cole Scholarship recipients. First, we have two staff members who won Golden Apple Awards that if they could come up and join us at the table? I was very happy. Please have a seat. Why don't you guys go ahead and introduce yourselves? Just tell us a little bit about yourselves. Yep, little face. There you go. I'm Andrea Hoggatt. I am a sixth grade mathematics teacher at Edison Middle School. It's my 15th year, not only in the district, but at Edison.
I'm Clayton Votter. I'm the agricultural science teacher at Preble High School. This is my third year at Preble, and I've been teaching for 15 years as well.
Thank you for joining us tonight. I was happy to attend the ceremony. I guess it was last week. What a beautiful night. Green Bay was very well represented. Your, you know, the sections that talked about your particular work and was very inspirational, and I really enjoyed it very, very much. Let's see here. We want to recognize you tonight, and then also join us at the table, Nora Olenicek and Oscar Sanchez-Santos, who have, are the Herb Cole winners? These students were selected for this year's Herb Cole Educational Foundation Scholarships. Excellence, let's see here, excellent scholars are chosen because of exceptional scholarship, leadership, citizenship, and school and community involvement. Why don't you guys go ahead and introduce yourselves as well?
My name's Nora Olenicek. I'm a senior at Preble High School.
Okay.
And next year? Next year, I'll be attending Michigan Tech, and I'll be studying material science and engineering.
My name is Oscar Sanchez-Santos. I'm a senior in Salways High School. Next year, I plan to take the pre-vet program at UWG.
Okay. These scholars are chosen by their schools for overcoming significant obstacles or adversity, demonstrating exceptional initiative in the classroom, and showing strong promise for succeeding in college and beyond. Congratulations to both of you.
If I could.
Please.
It's, if we could take a moment in the room just to think about how difficult it is to not only be nominated for Golden Apple, but to also win it. And for the Herb Cole Scholarship, there are thousands of students and staff throughout the district that apply for this, and you two were chosen. This is just one of many reasons to be proud of being a part of Green Bay Area Public School District. So please join me in recognizing the four of them one more time.
We, of course, want your pictures. So we're going to do this one more time. So if you'll join us over there.
She loves photos.
Yeah.
We're very critical. We ask a lot of questions.
And don't you say on, you can tell.
All right, next, we're moving on. It's kind of hard to move on. I'd love to be doing this all night long, but we have a rest of our agenda. Next, we're going to here have our InterCity Student Council Report. You guys joined us a little bit late. Would you please introduce yourselves and then go ahead and do your report?
Hi, I'm Paige Miller. I'm a ninth grader at Preble.
There you go.
I'm Lydia Robinson from Green Bay East. I'm a junior.
Okay, go ahead with your report.
We just need a minute to pull up our last meeting notes.
Absolutely.
I just want to shamelessly plug the Green Bay United Swim Team because of the four students that have been up here today. Two of them are swimmers.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right.
Yeah, we can share like the good stuff. Okay, so West has made a lot of further track and field. They have broken some records for their school. East High School just had a play of the Radium Girls last week, Friday and Saturday. And what are the other schools? Preble, do you want to go for Preble?
At Preble, we just had our spring play, the Radium, not Radium Girls, sorry, the Laramie Project. And we have our upcoming Mental Health 5K next week. And we have been working a lot with our sources of strength and Preble Pride groups to strengthen those groups. At Southwest, they had their ninth grade. We've been working a lot with ICSC to have more connection with the incoming ninth graders. So they recently had their night with them to connect with them more and show them what it is to be a high schooler. And tomorrow, Preble students will be going to Red Smith and Edison to connect with our eighth graders. That will be incoming ninth graders.
I'll just make a plug, then. I'll fill some time here, too, for the Laramie Project. I went Saturday night and was completely blown away by the kids and how brilliantly they handled what is a very difficult topic. It was very, came away very proud at the bravery of our students. Okay, go ahead.
We have also been working a lot with all our schools of making sure students know about our mental health resources and where they can go, because we found there's a lot of gray area with that of not knowing where to go when you're struggling, or you know a friend who's struggling. So we've been making posters to go up and having posters go up on our screens at school.
Okay, does that complete your report? Okay, thank you, guys. Okay, um, next is our public forum, and I have a gentleman, Mr. Tao. Are you ready to come up? Yeah. I think we have a special. Do you want to do, did you want to do any kind of introduction, Koo?
I was going to do that for him.
Oh, okay, then, then please proceed.
Laura, I want to take this opportunity to thank the board members and also the school district for allowing this opportunity. This will be a first in our district. Mr. Tao here is a very gifted artist in our community. And he is going to present us a beautiful celebration song today for our meeting and for our journey moving forward. So again, thank you so much for the district and staff. Thank you.
Okay.
Again, my name's Wa Yeh Tao, and I speak on behalf of Mr. Tao here, and also on behalf of the MONG group who are coming tonight, and not another whole community, but just on behalf of that. And I wanted to start saying that it's a pleasure to be here and allow us to be part of the meeting. We are very pleased that. But before Ni Chu sing the song, I want to kind of briefly explain exactly what he is going to say, because I don't think that you will understand. This is a MONG traditional song and no music, but it's from the heart. And I believe, so you probably hear about it, but this is a very special song. He planned this song just for tonight, and not just to support Koo, but for the entire school board member here. At the meaning of the song, it's all about support and blessing, and also prosperity for the entire school board staff and also the school. So Ni Chu will be saying that, and just listen, okay? So this is the meaning, but just listen. But again, it's from the heart, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. [speaking Chinese] Thank you. Thank you very much. This song costs a lot of money. It costs thousand, thousand money. So, no, just kidding. Thank you very much. Very special song, again, very prosperity, and you will be very safe now. He blessed you all the spiritual, the power, so you'll be very safe. Thank you.
We would like it very much if he would come back up and have a picture with the board. Is that possible?
Sure.
That would be great. Kinsey, do we have any other people who wanted to speak? Okay. I've been on this board for seven years, and I don't think I've ever had a beginning part of our, our meeting be so wonderful with so many interesting things happening. And thank you all who are still here for your patience. We're going to move into kind of our regular meeting. And so next is, under discussion is our legislative liaison, and that's Lynn Gerlach.
I'm sorry that I have to follow all that exciting stuff with the legislative update. Okay, so number one, I have for the first time ever a federal, some federal legislation to mention. The Biden administration has expanded the definition of sex-based discrimination. And the idea is to prohibit discrimination based on sex stereotypes, pregnancy, sexual orientation, gender identity, and sex characteristics. But I wanted to mention this specifically because it is not related to athletic participation. So that takes us to number two, which is, we've been following for a long time, and that is Assembly Bill 377, which you might recall was passed and vetoed earlier this month. Remember now, this is the one that says that public schools must designate sports teams as for males or for females, or for males and females. But the student must go by the sex that was given to him or her on the birth certificate, no changing. And Governor Evers vetoed this, and I don't know anything since then, but I would like to just share with you some of what he said when he vetoed it, because I think it's important. He pointed out that this bill ignores the transgender student athlete policy that was created by the Wisconsin Interscholastic Athletic Association in 2015. He feels it might conflict with federal law. He specifically cited the Civil Rights Act of 1964, which I actually remember. He mentioned that the United States Department of Education has a proposal that they've advanced now, which would prohibit schools from categorically banning transgender students from participating in athletics consistent with their gender identity. And he ends with these words, and I would like to quote him directly. He says, "States across this country may give way to radical policies targeting LGBTQ individuals and families and threatening LGBT folks' everyday lives and their ability to be safe, valued, supported, and welcomed being who they are. As long as I am the governor of this great state, Wisconsin will not be among them." So I want to share those words with you. And then you see number three is a list of education bills that have been signed into law. Number four is AB 232, which we followed, which has been passed. And then finally, I put in number five, mainly because it confuses me. The governor also vetoed Senate Bill 549, which relates to requiring schools to provide one recruiting day for members of certain federally chartered youth organizations. And his reason for vetoing it was that he said he wants to preserve local authority, and there is a possibility of potential litigation. So we can follow that and learn more about it. That's all I know for now.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, next is, we're going to get an update on our Clean Energy Advisory Committee from Josh. We're two meetings into this new advisory committee. I made it to the first one. I wasn't able to make it to the second one. This committee makes me very, very happy.
Yeah, you should be, you should be very proud of that committee. Lynn was able to join us two Tuesdays ago. I do not have the minutes written up because I was hoping to get some more things buttoned down before I sent information out to the group. But if that's not ready by the end of the week, I'll just write up what I have, and then we'll send it to you via your weekly update, and we'll post it in, on the website, on the, on the webpage for that advisory committee. So we spent, we spent most of the time with McKinstry, who has previously helped the district on some energy efficiency, energy efficiency projects back when, back when we had the energy efficiency exemption to the revenue limit. They've been helping us do some exploration into solar. They've also been helping us kind of scope out the, the projects involved in, in providing solar power to both King and Lombardi, which was part of the referendum passed in November of '22. We talked through that, that, those projects specifically. They, they learned that we will be able to get a 99% electric, electricity offset from King and about a 50% offset from Lombardi. This, this project is expected to cost the district about 2.5 million. We'll save close to 4 million over the, over the life of, of the project. You'll be seeing at the next board meeting where you take action, we'll be asking to approve McKinstry as in what is considered a performance contract under Wisconsin state law. So these sorts of contracts are specifically for energy savings projects that are entered into by, by public entities like school districts and municipalities. And what these contracts do is they guarantee the, the costs upfront, and they guarantee the savings on the backend. So it's a special kind of contract. It's, it's not, it's not as straightforward as a procurement as you're used to seeing, where we have the architects kind of bid out a general contractor. You select a, a general contractor. This requires some additional noticing. So we need to notice it for 10 days, then we'll ask you to take action on that. But we're very, very excited about that. We also learned about the work that McKinstry did with Salt Lake City, which is a school district almost identical in size, both in terms of student population and. and in the number of schools as Green Bay. Now their, their inventory of schools is newer than ours. But similarly sized school district that they helped through a net zero energy plan. And they walked through how they were able to do that, tying in solar projects with roof replacement cycles, which is really smart. We learned that 50% of the investment will get you 80% of the way there to net zero. And that last, that last 15 to 20% could cost three times as much to, to really get over the hump. So I'll, I'll be sharing those notes and that presentation with you. And for the next meeting, we still have some logistical things to figure out about how we want to organize ourselves. I think we're going to at least appoint a secretary and things like that. But then, one of, one of the things that the advisory committee is charged with by the board from your April of 2020 resolution is to, is to integrate within the district's wellness policy a recognition that, that climate affects staff and student wellness. And that is not something that's in the current wellness policy, so I'm working on getting together representatives from the district to see how we go about doing that. The primary focus of the group will be to deliver you a plan by December of '24 that will outline how we get to zero, net zero. But we need to make sure that we're also taking care of these other details that the, the board has requested that they look at.
So I remember at the first meeting, some discussion about whether or not that December was a maybe incredibly ambitious timeline, but you're feeling confident that that's doable?
Yeah, it's ambitious, but it, it's doable. I would like something a little firmer even before December, I think. I think it would be, you know, if the board is considering a capital referendum in November, it would be wise to consider energy efficiency projects as part of that referendum just because of the federal dollars available that will come back to the district. For example, this Lombardi and King between the Focus on Energy Initiative and then the Inflation Reduction Act, tax credits that are available. It's about two and a half million dollars. We're going to get three or $400,000 back, back into district funds to help fund. Well, we'll need to talk about that, but to fund operations or maybe we, we earmark that directly into our capital improvement fund to fund future capital improvements.
It just seems like right now, there's a lot of things that are coming together that are going to push our district forward on this particular issue and whatever we can do to maximize that. You know, I think our board is up for it, so. Any questions? Anybody have anything they want? Go ahead.
Um, what are you talking about? Like, what is the project that you're doing?
That particular project was, was approved as part of the November referendum that, that got the new ball fields in. It was, the original idea was, are you familiar with the, the area between King and Lombardi? There's like this big soccer field, take my word for it. The idea, the idea was to put a bunch of solar equipment out there to help produce our own electricity for those two schools. As we started to do more design work, we found that it was more efficient and cost effective to put those, those solar panels on the roof. So we're putting roofs, mounted solar panels on both King and Lombardi. And we're also going to be swapping out the lighting with LED lighting, which is, that's like the lights in this particular room, takes far less energy to run. So that's the project we're talking about, doing that, that solar project for King and Lombardi. And then the idea that we could get money back from the feds on that.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Thanks for the report, Josh. I just want to offer up a resource, because on Friday we had the opportunity to watch a White House Advisory Committee on this particular topic, talking about the Federal Inflation Reduction, Reduction Act and the how there's a lot of grant dollars to fund these kind of programs. And one of the members of that panel was from Wisconsin and has, is much further along in their process to, towards carbon neutrality. And so as it relates to kind of sharing some concrete initial steps and getting us to plan by December, it may be valuable to bring in someone that's been there, done that, to kind of consult with the advisory committee and I can provide names and everything after.
Anybody else have any questions for Josh regarding this committee? I just love this committee. I can't wait. Go ahead, Brian.
Josh, thank you for the report. I just want to apologize for not being at the meeting because I was feeling sick, so. I'm on the committee as well and very excited for what happens with it.
So, all right, I think that's it. Thanks, Josh. Okay, we're gonna move on to the report of canvassers. I think Andrew, this falls under your purview, so take it away.
Yeah, this is the annual certification of the Board of Canvassers. The Board of Canvassers, led by Celestine Jeffrey, city clerk. We certify that the attached tabular statements of both casts and summary statement of the Board of Canvassers, canvassed and properly prepared by us, are correct and true as compiled from the original returns. We further determine and certify that the following persons received the greatest and next to greatest number of votes for the respective office for which each was a candidate on April 2nd, 2024. For the Office of Green Bay Area Public Schools Trustee, can't remember of votes received, Andrew Becker at Cooley. And that was signed by the canvassers on 4/8/24.
Thank you. If anyone has any questions about that, that's sort of a housekeeping item, so, thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Would someone like to make, read the motion?
I move that the consent agenda items as presented be approved.
Second.
All right. Any questions or discussion? Kinsey? Online voting is now open. Did everyone get a pop-up? No? No? Uh-uh. Do you want to, do a voice vote? Do you want us to see, I don't know if you're allowing that or something? Rick, do you want a voice vote? Okay.
Yes.
All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Okay, I just want to make a note that we, we just voted on a new position at Southwest High School, our new AD, Chris Williams, who is here. And I want to know if he'd like to come up and just, I don't know, say hello.
Thank you. I didn't know I was gonna have to talk here, so I'm just gonna kind of go off the hip. But I wanted to first say, you know, how excited I am about the, the opportunity. I want to, I want to thank Michael Whistle, the principal, for giving me this great opportunity. Appreciative of Mike. Cindy Olson is, has really been a great supporter of mine, I want to thank her as well. I gotta, I gotta tell you a quick story. You know, my, my lifelong chosen work has been as a football coach, right? That brought me to Green Bay and brought my, my family to Green Bay with me. My wife has always been a school teacher and she has, you know, always been able to get a different teaching job. We've lived everywhere from Albuquerque to Montreal, right, in my coaching life. And so the, when this job ended, my wife didn't want to leave this system, right? This was the one time where she said, "We're not moving," right? So we stayed and, and she was in love with this place and all these people who she knows. There's David, there's Vicky, who's been an awesome supporter. Porter, Katie, you know, there's so many people and faces that my wife just absolutely loves. And I, I fell in love with the system too. So after the, and just give you a quick footnote here, but after that football job ended, because my wife wanted to stay, I became a teacher, right? And so I got to see from the inside all these relationships that she had developed and why she loved all these people. And so I'm just so excited. Then I, so my love of athletics became a love for the Green Bay public school system, which then became a love for these kids. So I mean, I'm just elated to, to have this opportunity to really get my hands and make a difference, you know, on these kids in Southwest and Lombardi. But just such a welcoming school system that I'm proud to be a part of, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Just want to let you know, you have one gift coming from me. All of your football officials are scheduled for your JV and middle school games at Lombardi and Southwest.
Okay. All right, we're moving on to the election of our school board officers and secretary. So this is gonna, those of you who are watching, this is gonna be a process that frankly might take a little while. So, um, let's see here. All right. We're gonna start, the first election will be for president. We do this every year. Every year we, we, we choose our, our new leaders and, and we do it after the spring election. So with that, I will open the floor to nominations. James?
I nominate Laura McCoy for the position of president of the school board.
Thank you, I will accept that nomination. Any other nominations?
I would select Laura McCoy for president of the board.
Yep. Any, oh, I'm sorry, any other nominations? Yeah, any other nominations? Okay. Brian?
I nominate James Lyerly for president of the board.
Okay.
I'll accept.
Okay. Any other nominations for president? Okay. Now we have to vote. Oh, please, yes. Go ahead, James.
I, I want to start, because I nominated Laura McCoy because she communicated that she was absolutely willing to continue the work in executing the duties of the president. I work very well with Laura McCoy. I feel like I have skills and experiences that complement her in that role. And I encourage anyone that has time, willingness, capabilities to step forward and provide service to the district to do so. And so, you know, I, when I nominated her, that's recognition that I think that she's doing a fine job in this district. I accepted the nomination from Brian because I think the board is best served by choice and a unanimous vote without choice has little meaning on it. So I would like the presidency to be filled with the preferred person versus the only person that stepped forward to do the job. So that's the nature of my acceptance.
Okay. Go ahead, Brian.
That's why I speak to my nomination. I think that we have a very healthy board and I think that I, I fully support either one of the candidates running for it. I think Laura has done a fantastic job. I think we need to, it's a stressful job and provide breaks if necessary and just rotation through. But I, I fully support both candidates. You know, spoken with both candidates about that before. And I think just the opportunity to present it to the board and have us have that conversation is necessary. And like I said, I'm, I'm proud to serve with both of you and I'm proud to serve with all of our board members here. And I think, I think we have a healthy board and I think just changing is possibilities. But I appreciate everything everyone's done for the board and both of you for accepting nominations.
Okay. I'll just speak a little bit. I, I prepared something, but you know what? At the last minute of here, I think I'm gonna just throw it out. It's been really an honor to serve as president. I think anyone who serves on this board understands that it's more than, there's a lot more to it than just what is, happens at the board table and all of, all of us. There's, there's a lot more to it, there's, in, in that capacity, like over the seven years I've been on this board, I've, I've, I don't know, I've done so many different roles, too, too many to really list here. Also, early on, I think in, in my time on the board, I realized that if I, if I really wanted to do this job well, just be on the board, period, but also as president, that I, I would need to push outward into our community even more. And so I, I, I'm on like the Brown County Human Services Board. I'm on the Neighborhood Association as an at-large member. These are things that help me do this job better by, by linking into other aspects of our community that are, are, it's all about community building, basically. So, um, let's see here. And I think, you know, my work over the last seven years has showed my deep commitment to the work that I was elected to do by the people of this community. And I've, I've done everything I can to expand my learning and in order to be a better representative of the people of this community. I think I'll leave it at that. So we're gonna take a vote. Oh, I'm sorry, did you have any, yeah, did you want to, is there anything else?
So, um, I, I think that my, my presentation is really foundational, right? I, I, this is an important role and I, I accepted a nomination because I think board members are served well by having a choice. You know, we have complementary skills and there are also experiences that set us apart. And so I think that's healthy to have that conversation. You know, when I look back over the last couple of years that I've been on this board, I feel like I've made contributions as an individual board member or without title. I feel like I've made, you know, contributions as vice president. And so at the end of the day, I agree with Brian, we have a healthy board and I will execute the duties that I am, you know, assigned and I will step forward and offer my services as often as I'm physically capable, so.
All right. Oh, go ahead, Andrew.
There is a old tradition in the school board history since the school board became elected. I, I think it was a, a healthy tradition while it, while it lasted and maybe it can't come back in the same way it was before. But when, when Judy Crane was first elected to the first elected board in Green Bay in 1974, taking actually first place by a lot despite being last place on a ballot with 16 people on it, because it was a vote for seven election. When Judy was nominated the next year, she declined and there was a, a while of a rotation of what was then the president, the first vice president, the second vice president, under different rules that existed at the time. And I think that's healthy. I realize that there's maybe, maybe the one-year thing doesn't make as much sense, but I, were I, would I ever end up running for or being selected as president or vice president, I would commit myself to seeking a different office after a couple of years because I think rotation because I think rotation is, is healthy. And, um, that's, that's what I think. I think rotation after a couple of years and, which included, by the way, people coming back in, uh, to offices as well. So, thank you.
Okay. James and I do work very well together. It's, it's, and we've been through some stuff, right? Some stuff, all of us, over the last, uh, few years. And he's just been invaluable to that, to, to, um, as far as helping, helping me in my, in my role as president, but just brings so much to our board in general. So I, I, I'm always appreciative of that. If, if no one has anything else to say, um, I think we'll just do, uh, go around the table? Is that how we do that? Kinsey? I'm sorry? Okay. Okay. Lee?
McCoy.
Mills?
Lyerly.
Crossen?
McCoy.
Lyerly?
McCoy.
Gerlach?
Lyerly.
Becker?
Lyerly.
McCoy. McCoy. Okay. That's a four-three vote. We're done. Yeah, I, I, yeah, okay. Um, thank you, everybody. Um, I don't think I have anything to add, but I appreciate, uh, the vote and, um, we're gonna move on to vice president. All right. I would, um, I'm gonna, uh, start out the nomination if you'll indulge me by nominating James Lyerly for vice president.
Accept.
Okay, any other nominees? Brian?
Nominate Andrew Becker.
I'll accept.
Any other nominees? All right. Um, then let's, uh, give everyone a moment to comment. Wow, well, I, I just, I just kinda spoke what, um, but I, but I'm happy, more than happy to reiterate how, um, how great, uh, James and I have been working together, um, a, a, as far as trying to lead our board, uh, and our, and, um, through some, some real difficult things in recent years. And I, I so appreciate his kinda ability to analyze and to, uh, think in, in really, really good strategic ways, um, with a lot of forethought and a lot of looking down the road five, ten, fifteen, twenty years from now. Um, that is a skill that I struggle with, but he brings it in spades. Like it's, 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 and it's helped our board, um, navigate through some very complex and challenging things. Um, I, you know, I, 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 it's hard for me to imagine, um, some of the things we've been through without his input and I am more than happy to vote for him as vice president. Go ahead, Brian.
Nominate Andrew. Um, I've known Andrew for many years. I've proudly nominated him the last two elections, that coming after I ran against him my first attempt for reelection. And I support Andrew, his knowledge, his experience. I'm sorry, I didn't run against you, Andrew, I ran for a spot that you were running as well. But Andrew brings a wealth of experience and knowledge as he just shared with us. Um, I, we have a very healthy board. So I think all of our candidates have done a, a strong job. I think Andrew brings a different perspective to the vice president's spot. But as I said before, I'm happy with whoever comes into those spots and want to share that opportunity.
Um, just something you said about having a healthy board. Um, I think this, in communities across this country, that is a problem in many districts. And the fact that our board is healthy and functions well together and we have new people and I'm so excited about that, you know, like it, it, it feels really good to come to the table and knowing what we have ahead of us this year. It's, I, we can't, I think reminding people that our board is functioning well is, is really important right now. So, anybody else want to speak to nominations? Go ahead.
First of all, I want to congratulate, uh, Andrew and James for stepping up to the plate, uh, to want to be this nominee. Um, to me, very importantly, uh, as leaders of this district, I think that, uh, uh, we have to demonstrate a, uh, uh, a, a sense of, of leadership in some ways where we establish culture, a positive culture that can be translated to the district. And I think that, uh, what I have seen so far from the outside and now on the inside, I think that both, uh, James and, um, uh, Laura works well together. Uh, a, a living example of leadership that coexists where we could compromise, uh, where we have decency, uh, and, uh, work through some of the most difficult and challenging tasks that we're gonna be, uh, looking at coming up the future here. So, I think that's important to me and it should be important to the rest of us. Uh, so that is my take on the, uh, support for, uh, uh, James for, uh, vice president of the board.
Okay, anybody else want to speak? Go ahead, Rick.
Um, yeah, just s- speaking as the, one of the new members of the board, first of all, my, obviously, uh, humbled by the opportunity. I, I want to emphasize that when we conclude the voting and, and the officers are, are in place, that we go into it with a committed sense of pushing against whatever status quo may be bogging us down unbeknownst to us. Because I'm gonna come to things, I'm gonna ask why a lot, um, to, it, with the, with the spirit of moving things forward aggressively, forward so that we can get some of these very tough items and issues, concluded. So I'm, I'm gonna support this, 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 this nomination as well in that spirit. I just wanted to make sure that that was for the record.
All right, anybody else? Go ahead, Andrew.
Okay, so, um, couple, couple important things to point out. There's no, there's no candidate in this race. And we are, not only would I say that we are quite fortunate now or three weeks ago with the board we had then with, right, how far we got along. I would, I would venture to say that even in previous years where people thought our board was, was crazy or things were going off the rails or something, I would have, and I've said this before, I would have encouraged at any time with any combination of board members in the last twenty years, at any time, I would have encouraged people who were super concerned about that to make a trip and see some of the, um, to see a wide range of school board meetings throughout the entire state of Wisconsin, large and small, and see how crazy you felt any Green Bay board was during that time. Because I think we, I mean, there, there are stories of places where the financial person sits with the, the book of paying the bills, "Any questions on page one? Any questions on page two?" So that's just, you know, so we, we've already been on another level. The president and vice president, um, and some of the history of that, going back to a compromise about a, uh, leadership change. It was kinda determined that it might be healthy to have, rather than change leadership one year, the decision was if perhaps a more active vice president, so two different perspectives would be in that room together, would be valuable. And I, I think it was and I think, and one of those years, um, I served in that perspective. And we had a president who was more for, I know some people don't like the term. Uh, we had a president who was a bit more hands-off in directing the administration and me who is a bit more hands-on, though again, refer back to my comment about nor, uh, other school districts where it's not even close. But it's not that my twenty-four years of experience are important to have in that room in the president and vice president meeting. It is important that twenty-four years of experience be in that room because a lot of important decisions are made behind the scenes there and decisions about what, what will even ever see the light of a meeting is made in those meetings. And I know because I did them for, for a year when I was vice president and Brenda Warren was president. So that's, I'm, I think there's the, I, I think my experience in the room is, is valuable. Not that it's better than anyone else's, but it's, I, I happen to be the one who has it. And I do think, if you look at the history of votes, um, it was, you know, perhaps I have voted separately from the administration, um, more so than others. And I think it's healthy to have those differences of perspective in the room. Um, and if, if selected for vice president, I would serve in the role for no more than two years.
Okay, anyone else want to speak? Go ahead, Brian.
So I speak, uh, briefly off of something Rick had mentioned. I, I also support, I don't know if I would say aggressive or more progressive or making sure that we are moving at a quicker pace on some of the decisions that we have to make as a board. Because, and I've, I've brought this up before, as far as, you know, we have three-year terms and making sure that we have things accomplished during those terms, which we have. But of being a little bit more, I'll use the word aggressive with it, uh, as far as making sure that we are getting goals and objectives of the board being forwarded as much as possible. And I, and I'm, that's not a critique of anything. I just think that we have an opportunity to be a more active board on decisions as far as policy and procedures that the board covers and to give the direction to the district as where our views are on that. I'm not, I'm not choosing anything specifically, but I think there's more opportunities for us than we're necessarily taking advantage of, so.
All right, anybody else? Okay, then we're ready to vote. Kinsey? Mills?
Becker.
Crossen?
Lyerly.
Lyerly?
Lyerly.
Gerlach?
Lyerly.
Becker?
Becker.
McCoy? Lyerly. Lee?
Lyerly.
Okay, the vote is, um, five-two in favor of, um, James Lyerly. So, congratulations, James. All right, so we're going to move on to the election of the treasurer. Does anyone want to make a, um, a nomination? Brian?
I nominate Andrew Becker for treasurer.
Any other nominations? Hey, no other nominations? Anybody, are you sure? Go ahead, Lynn.
I would be perfectly happy and, uh, confident to have Andrew as the treasurer.
Thank you. No. All right. Okay, um, that's a nomination. Uh, um, go ahead, Brian.
I'd like to move, make a motion for unanimous consent for Andrew.
Anyone?
Second.
Um, all right, all in favor? Is that a, all in favor, say aye? Uh, he was trying to avoid that, but we're gonna go ahead and take a roll call. Go ahead, Kinsey. Crossen?
Becker.
Lyerly?
Becker.
Gerlach?
Becker.
Becker?
Becker.
McCoy?
Becker.
Lee?
Becker.
Mills?
Becker.
All right. Seven oh in favor of Becker, so, um, uh, that's our new treasurer. Um, we're moving on to the election of our clerk. Go ahead, Andrew.
Uh, I nominate Brian Mills. I'll accept.
All right, any other nominations? All right, um, so you know, uh, their nominations? We're gonna do another vote. Kinsey? Lyerly?
Mills.
Gerlach?
Mills.
Becker?
Mills.
McCoy?
Mills.
Lee?
Mills.
Mills?
Mills.
Crossen?
Mills.
All right, seven oh. Congratulations, Brian. Okay. Um, the next one is the election of secretary to the Board of Education, which is Kinsey. Um, this is just a procedural thing because it's, it's her job and, and, you know, but we do have to go through this. Um, so, um, I would like to nominate Kinsey Lehrer as secretary, um, to the Board of Education.
I'll s-
Oh, second.
All right. Um, I, I mean, we all depend on Kinsey for a lot. She, um, I tell people on a pretty regular basis that she secretly runs our school district and, um, yeah, obviously I'm joking, but she is, uh, absolutely, um, uh, necessary to how we do our work and, um, and does such an amazing job. And I'm more than happy to take this very, um, procedural vote on it. So, anyone else want to speak? Okay, then I think, um, we can go ahead and vote, Kinsey. Gerlach?
Kinsey Lehrer.
Becker?
Lehrer.
McCoy?
Lehrer.
Lee?
Leric.
Mills?
Lehrer.
Crossen?
Lehrer.
Lyerly?
Lehrer.
Okay, vote is seven zero. Kinsey's gonna stay on in that position? Yeah. I don't know why we take that vote, like, we got someone ought to explore that, but, uh, I, I just want to take the opportunity to thank you for all you do. You and Mandy, boy. It's a big, it's a big job and, um, I, I really appreciate everything you do, so. Next, we're gonna move on to some of these appointments. Um, the first one is, uh, Legislative Liaison, which, um, uh, Lynn Gerlach has been doing so, such a great job at this. Um, I don't know if she's willing to do it for one more year. No? You ready to move on? Okay. Thank you for the, I think, the one, this year, it's been a year that you've been doing it and really, I did it for three years some time ago and it's, it's, um, it's a time-consuming task. So, um, I'm wondering if there's anybody who would like to take it on? Do you have an idea, Brian? Would you like to do it?
I would be happy to if no one else is interested. It's a high sale. I, I've done it similarly for other groups.
Okay. Um, that would be fantastic and thank you very much for stepping up. Is, is there anybody else? You're, you're, you're it. So, um, the next one is the CSU Seven Liaison and Representative to their annual convention, which is coming up, um, in like early May, I think. Um, anyone, anyone have a, an interest in doing that? Andrew, Lynn? No?
I have absolutely no interest in doing that, but I think for one of our new board members, it's a great opportunity to find out the workings of school boards and policy in the states and just kind of the landscape of it. So it'd open up the workload to someone else.
Okay. Andrew?
Traditionally, except in the rare cases where someone has had a very strong interest in going, it's, um, fallen to the new board member who I believe actually, actually technically is cool. actually technically is Koo, I believe.
Okay.
It's not that it's super important, obviously, date, but what this really mostly comes down to is date conflicts.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. I don't know, Koo, I know that you're, you have a very, um, challenging schedule. So I don't know if that's something that you could take. I don't think it's a huge time commitment, um, but, uh, it's, uh, something you can consider. I would say you don't have to make the decision tonight, Brian.
I'd like to make a motion that we table that till the next one. Um, I don't know if we even have to do anything on it.
Yeah, they have their meeting coming up soon. Um, and, uh, and I, I think we want to be represented at it.
With those meetings being open to the public, can we ask both board members and just give the vote to one? And then I'm sure we could switch it if one of them says, if they're both interested, as I awkwardly say this with you both right next to me. Um, with, with that opportunity, I mean, cause I, I don't, I don't remember there being any earth-shattering votes that take place that we could delegate the vote to one person in.
Yeah, I don't think it, I don't think it, um, it matters exactly who on the board does that. Um, um, I would agree with your assessment of that, so. Anybody, um, anybody else wanna take on that work? I'm not seeing a lot of takers here.
This is for a one, this is one of all the other, this is the one that is for a one-off meeting.
Yeah. Yeah.
I, I will be honored to, uh, uh, take on this, uh, this, this role to go to the CISA annual convention there.
Yeah, we can talk more about it too. I, I, I've never been to it myself and so I, I'm not sure, Brian, did you, have you been to one of those?
I, I think so. You can tell how inspiring it was. I think it was my first year and I'm looking, no one else has selected that year that's here. Oh, James was, yeah. Um, so, yeah, it's, it's a one thing where you learn the layout of CISA and kind of the work that they do with us, so. And I was familiar with it from my other jobs, so. It's, it's definitely worthwhile finding the lay, the land and stuff with it, but.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you. Um, yeah, I think it's just that one night, so, um, okay. The next is the WASB delegate and alternate. I've done this for the last seven years. And, um, I think it's probably time, and I know Rick has, Rick and I talked about this a little bit and he has already expressed interest in that. Um, it, it means you go down to the convention, so there's, you gotta have the time to, you know, spend some time in Milwaukee in January. Um, and, uh, sit in a very large room with hundreds of people and, um, take a lot of votes o- o- on behalf of our, of our district. Uh, oh, um, I, I, you've already said you would step up, so if everyone's okay with that, Rick is gonna take that work on.
Thanks, Ed.
Very good, thank you. Um, next to, yes.
Do you wanna select an alternate right away?
Hmm, why don't you put me in there as an alternate, cause I always go. But honestly, if anyone else wants to do it or shows, you know, can, it's hard to plan ahead frankly into January, like, a lot of people can't do that, um, you know, nine months or what, seven months out, so. Um, but put, put my name in there for now and then, um, but anyone else who would like to do that would be good. The next, um, the next one is Head Start Representative. I did this for about three years. Uh, for the last couple of years, it's been Nancy and Lynn. Did you wanna keep doing that? Okay, that'd be fantastic. Um, we don't really actually have to have two people, it just worked out that way for a while. Um, so, um, if, 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 unless someone else would like to do the work with Lynn, um, it's a fairly big commitment of time, right Lynn? Yeah, yeah. They have monthly meetings and, um, why don't you talk about it a little bit?
I'll just say it's a monthly meeting, but it's working, because it's a federal law that they have to, we take the federal money, they have to report to the board every month. But we have two fantastic administrators in that program, so we just sit there and listen.
Yeah. You learn a lot. I, I remember my time on that. I, I learned a ton about, um, our community through that. It's, it's a very interesting program and, and our district is doing a fantastic job. Um, we have a, I started on the, on the east side and on the west side, so, um, and, and it, when you guys have time, I recommend, you know, setting up a, a tour. It's, it's, it's a really fun place to spend time too. Okay, so Lynn, um, and then, uh, the last is, uh, um, Kinsey put together a list of, uh, school assignments. These assignments will start, uh, July first. Um, right now, we're playing out the rest of the school year through June thirtieth, so these assignments will be in effect on July first. Go ahead, Brian.
I, I think this is one of our great opportunities as board members to see the different buildings. Um, I know I brought it up before about discussion of like, what are responsibilities with that and I'd like for us to kind of continue to look into that part. But I also have a question, um, and it's partly because I'm not sure if I remember correctly. Um, do we have like a rotation set up or how is it set up? Because I can't remember if I had Southwest two years ago or not and just that opportunity to make sure that we're getting to different buildings, so.
Um, there's, it's, it's more complicated than you'd actually think. Kinsey, maybe you can offer some of the complexities of how things get decided?
Uh, yes, there is a rotation, so I've been, of course, I've only been in this role two years, so I'm trying to rotate people through those, um, different spots. Um, this year I'll notice that there are a few less schools, um, because a couple of the schools will be closing at the end of this year. So that, just trying to even people out a little bit. So things got shifted a little bit, but, um, primarily we're just moving down.
Okay, all right.
So, just so I'm clear, that doesn't, I mean, these are our schools that we primarily focus on, but we're not limited to.
Never. Yep, no, no. No, uh, as new school board members too, you guys are gonna, you know, you're gonna wanna get into schools, um, whenever, whenever you can, but it, it just makes it more manageable to have these groups that are, um, that you kind of focus on, um, as best as you can. You know, it's just a long, we've done this for a very long time. Having forty-two schools, it's, it again, makes it more manageable. Go ahead, Andrew.
Um, yeah, so this is, um, I'm gonna squeeze this in while we're still posted under board organization and appointments and this is really, really important. And I, I let this go for a year. But there are, we did, we did experiment one year with having singular committee chairs of the, of three work session areas and we did, we did move off of that model. And when we moved off that model, we did not abandon it. We returned to what was, or were supposed to have returned to what existing policy was when we reverted it. There has forever been a chair, there was a chair and then it became co-chairs of three committees that met with the relevant administrator and did some more in-depth prep work. And one or the other of those folks chaired the, um, relevant work session. So for example, uh, not last year, cause we didn't do it, but in the past Nancy Welch and I had alternated, uh, leading an education portion of the work session meetings. The fact that this, this was the way that going back for a very long time in one form or another, that there has been some spreading out of leadership, because if you have two, four, six, then the president into a committee, everyone else was a co, everyone else had that opportunity to be a co-chair. Why, why did I not bring it up sooner? I don't, I don't know. Um, I don't, I, I'm, I'm very disappointed to not see this on this list and I shouldn't have to be the one asking for it, because it is a standard. And so I would just like the, to have the commitment that in, in May, under the existing policy that will, um, I think generally speaking, people solicited their interest in the committees to the president and then the appointments got rolled out in, in May rather than at this one, but I would just like to know if there's going to be that commitment that we're gonna follow this policy that we didn't last year.
Um, my recollection of that is that when I came on the board, we did not have those subcommittees for about maybe three years or so. Um, it was Steve Merle brought that back. Um, and we did that for a cou, maybe two years and then COVID happened. And once COVID happened, it kind of became a, you know, we were, uh, uh, focus shifted, um, quite drastically and then, um, and then, you know, leadership changed a couple of times here and now we're, now here we are. So, um, if the rest of the board is interested in having these subcommittees, I think it was education, um, poli, policy and government and operations were the three, uh, subcommittees and was it finance? Did we have a fourth?
There was a financial audits that was considered separate from, and people were a co-chair of one of the three.
Okay.
But I'm not, I'm not speaking to the committee chair model that, um, that Eric Van den Hoibel did for a year. But this is, we did not, uh, other than, we, we always have had something except for the last year. We had a different thing, but there was always an alternation, uh, uh, someone other, at the, at the second Monday meeting, three different people other than the president were each running a section of the meeting. And so we didn't, we did not stop doing that. Except for one year and it was this last year. And we decided to revert back to the existing policy from what Eric had tried, which is fine. But there is a, this is in policy.
Go ahead, Brian.
I, I agree with what you're saying on that, Andrew. Um, since I've been on the board, we haven't done it, so it's been at least two years. If I'm looking correctly at James, we were like the same time. What I would like to propose, and the attorney says something different, she sits right next to me, um, is Andrew, could we get this on the agenda for June with, just because we're at April thirtieth with this, as far as different ideas, because I also have brought up in the past different just order of running things, as far as Robert's rules, speakers list and stuff like that, so we have ideas being brought forward in June as far as how we would like this group with the seven people that are in here for at least a year to move forward within the next year. I appreciate what you're saying with previous boards, what they've done and stuff, but we're moving forward. We have a lot of new people on here, but just to hash out that idea, to hash out some other ones, and I would be more than happy to put together some thoughts or ideas from other people on it. Would that work, Andrew, as far as looking in June?
I, I guess my concern, first of all, is the current model in place and just not being used?
So I, I just came to direct you to policy one-seventy and rule one-seventy. Section three of the policy says that the sessions, the work sessions are divided into three areas, education, operations, policy and governance. And then, um, three C says the board president shall appoint two board members to, to preside over discussion in each of the work session areas. And then the rule says, um, the board president shall appoint two members to preside over the discussion in each of the work areas. Uh, the board president shall appoint each board member excluding the board president to provide over one of the three work areas. The two board members appointed to preside over a given work session shall serve as equal co-chair persons of that work session area unless the two agree between themselves that one will be the chairperson and the other will be the vice chair. Duties of the chairperson or co-chairperson shall be as follows. Preside over the discussion in the work session area meeting. Regularly review and discuss agendas for upcoming meetings with administrators as appropriate for the work session. This can be done in person or by telephone. Co-chairperson shall take care to avoid the need for two separate reviews of the agenda with the administrator. And three, remain in communication with each other to facilitate effective work sessions. In the event a work session area has a chairperson and vice chairperson instead of two co-chairs, the vice chair shall fill the above duties in the absence of the chairperson. Okay. So, uh, go ahead, no, go ahead, Andrew.
Okay, so this is again, this is an important distribution of leadership that has not been filled. And to say, well, let's, let's have some new ideas and, and brainstorm for June, of course, I'm always open to someone, but, but see, the, here's the problem is if I, if I stand down on this now, am I doing the same thing I did when I was told a couple of years ago that, oh, we'll get to it? Or we won't do it for, you know, this is other, otherwise, okay? You know, I talked before about the concentration, the, the concentration of, of authority. And it's two, it's two good people who have it, but it is a concentration of authority and the balancing factor was that the board president appointed everyone as a committee chair. So I don't, we haven't vacated that, that just, yeah.
Go ahead, Brian.
Andrew, I just want to clarify, I'm all in favor of that and I'm, I was just saying, let's, not knowing that was directly in the policy with that, let's make sure that we got it set. Um, the reason I looked at June is cause it's April twenty-ninth now and just gives us a little time to hash it out. So I would like to see that for the June meeting as well. Would that work, Andrew?
If, y- yes, but I will consider this a, I will, I will forgive and forget for the last two years. But if, if some distribution of leadership does not happen here because we have it in policy, I will consider it a grave violation of trust. Okay, and we just, we just talked about how we all get along pretty well and I, I, I think that we do. But denying the distribution of leadership and concentrating the authority is not okay. So.
All right, so we'll take this up, um, oh, I'm sorry, Lynn, go ahead.
I, I just really have a question, but I, you know, I hear what Andrew's saying and I had, now that I know that it's, it's in the policy, I really hear what Andrew's saying. I had no idea. Um, I probably read that when I started, I read all those policies, but I can't remember all of that. What I would like to know is if we go to that model, do we still hear firsthand from the staff at our meetings? Because that is extremely important. Yes? Okay.
Sure.
Okay, so, um, we can, we'll make room for it in, in the work session in June, thinking about that work? Okay, all right. Kinsey can, Andrew?
I guess although certainly perhaps someone would have a idea for a different committee or, or, or something, I, I don't see this, this is, again, this is, I'm, I'm agreeing to wait till for something that is in policy and has been ignored, not, there's not to get behind this, to reinstate this. There's a big difference. City, city council would have never not appointed committees for a year.
Brian?
Just a point of clarification on this, from when the policy is right, I didn't hear a date on it. And Andrew, I completely agree with what you're saying. We should do it moving forward. We have, from two years ago, we have five new board members if I'm counting correctly on this, so. I just want to stress our ability to move forward on this. I, I completely support it. I think June is a fair date with it. If I don't, you know, i- if for some reason it's getting pushed back, I'm, I agree with you, Andrew. This is something that we can do pretty quickly on it, but we're not city council and we're not the same board that we were two years ago, three years ago. It's a new group of people going forward, so I trust that we will move forward with this, so.
Um, May, and also May is, is, um, for pretty much everyone on the board is gonna be kind of an insanely busy month um, as we move toward graduation and, um, all the different celebrations and I, I pretty much have something scheduled every single evening in May. Um, I, I'd, I'd rather approach this with a, a, a clearer vision after we come out of this very busy time. So anyone else want to speak to it, Brian?
With the organization part, which I got logged on my computer on here, I would still like in June for us to have a discussion points as far as. Robert's Rules, process, making sure that we're following it, just because I think it helps the board meetings, even though it's eight o'clock, run more efficiently on it as far as process. So, it takes away anything on there. And I would be happy to come up with ideas, or if anyone else, on ways that we can follow that and have a, a spot on the meeting in June if we can.
Okay, all right. All right, noted. Um, all right, let's move on. Um, we're going on to action items. And the first, uh, would someone like to read the first motion, please?
Um, I'll move that revisions to the twenty-four, twenty-five school year calendar is presented, be approved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open.
Rick, are you getting a pop-up? Oh, excellent. Thank you.
All votes have been entered, and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
All right, next, uh, B, would someone please read the motion?
I move that the course essential documents and resources for grades six through eleven social sites as presented be approved.
Questions or discussions? Anyone who's watching this, um, we, we've had a lot of discussion at our last meeting about all these topics and had some presentations. And so, um, if we make our way quickly through these votes, it's not that we're not, we've already had, we've already had a pretty high level of discussion and question time. Um, however, we have new people at the board. So, this would be your chance to, um, you know, to, to chime in with any concerns that you might have about these. Go ahead, Brian.
I, I just wanna add that my concern, as far as resources being available, has been addressed, um, in our other minutes, as far as mechanisms, if they don't reach it. So.
Okay. All right. All right. Go ahead, Kinsey.
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered, and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Um, we're gonna head into, uh, some job descriptions that we're voting on. James?
I move that we consolidate items C through F.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Um, we're gonna consolidate those two. Uh, can you make it, someone make that motion then? Oh, no, you did. Some.
Well, we moved to consolidate. So, then you have to, I, I moved to approve items C through F as listed.
All right.
Second.
All right. Give me, Kinsey, a moment. Sir?
With us having two new, interested city student council representatives, I gave them the okay that, you know, they've got finals and stuff if they wanted to go. This is pretty exciting, this part. So.
Yeah, the rest of these votes are not gonna be, um, particularly, um, it's just a lot of this sort of thing. So, yeah, if, if it is, and it is getting late. So, I get it. So, all right. Thank you for coming. Yeah, no, yeah, you, yeah, I think that's a smart move. Oh. Okay. Good night, guys. All right. Kinsey, are you ready? We'll do a voice vote on this one. Okay. Lyerly?
Aye.
Crossan?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Gerlock?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven to zero. All right, we're moving on to G, fee schedule. Would someone please read the motion?
I'll move that the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five fee schedule as presented be approved.
My second.
Any questions or discussion? Andrew?
Uh, just confirming, no changes?
No changes from last year. Brian?
That's correct.
Yep.
I also just wanted to mention, I asked previously about, um, senior citizens being able to get to our events for free for athletic events. They already could. So, come watch.
Okay. Right, any other discussion? All right, Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered, and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
All right, we're on to H. Would someone please read the motion?
I move that effective July first, twenty-twenty-four, the daily rate paid for substitute guest teachers moves to the rate of one hundred and ninety dollars for a full day, ninety-five dollars for a half day. And that substitute guest teacher is working twenty-one or more consecutive days in the same assignment, be two hundred and ten dollars a full day, one hundred and five dollars a half day as presented be approved.
Second.
Any questions, any discussion? These are the same rates, I think, that we offered during COVID? Yep. All right. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered, and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
All right, next is the roof contract for West High School. Would someone read the motion, please?
I'm gonna move that we combine items I through P.
Second.
Can I make a friendly? If you're gonna go through P, can we go through policies as well to II?
Sure. I, I was thinking purchases, policies, but I, I, I'm fine with II.
Does anyone have any?
I would second James's.
Okay. Um, there, yeah, there's a whole slate of policy updates that Melissa did. Um, but, yeah. Yeah. Okay, all right. All right. So, um, what's that?
I, I don't know if it's mine to accept, but in the interest of simplicity, sure. Friendly? Okay, yes.
Okay. Um, so we have to, uh, can we just do a voice vote on James's friendly? No?
It's not a, if it's a friendly, then we're not voting on it because it's a friendly. Cause that's what a friendly is.
All right.
So, it's, it is, we, we voice vote that we're permitting the combination, and then someone's gonna move to approve I through PP.
All right, let's do that. So, um, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right. So, um.
I move to approve items I through, um, P, uh, items, P through II as presented. I through I. Okay, I, I move that we approve items I through II as presented.
Second.
Okay. Let me know when you're ready. Are you ready? Yeah. All right. McCoy?
Aye.
Gerlock?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Crossan?
Aye.
Lyerly?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Um, on our agenda setting, um, there's the meeting schedule. Um, I don't know if I can put this under here, but we've got graduations coming up. That's, um, we have a little bit of distribution issues. Some, we have a lot of people showing up and some, um, that, as far as board members. So, everyone have a look at the schedule, please. And, um, we need to try to distribute them a little bit more evenly. Um, and, uh, I just want you all to take a look at it, and maybe take your name off of some of them. Go ahead, Brian.
I understand the concerns with quorums and everything else on that. But I think, a- and you'll see my name on a lot of them, because I think this is one of the greatest honors we have as a board member. And I, I just want clarification that we can still have more than four people, because it's a large public event on that. And just kind of justification why we'd want less, because all it is, is more hands being shaken.
Yeah. I, I don't know. We had a little discussion about that today. Um, I don't, I, I'm not sure about, Melissa, do we have a policy about, like, what, as far as, if we have six, um, board members show up at graduation, is that really? Okay. Okay. So, if there's gonna be more than three, we're gonna post. But, um, but we, but the sooner we know kind of who's these graduations, the better we can plan. That's all. Um, um, so I'm just gonna give everyone a heads up about that. That's all. So, give it some thought. Um, but yeah, if you wanna go to every single one, go to every single one. So, all right, with that, I would entertain, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're adjourned.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org for more information on the district and future meeting dates. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling nine two zero four four eight two zero two five or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.